Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Thursday, October 10th, 2013 Town of Penfield Planning Board. We have two public hearings tonight. We'll listen to the applicants, we'll have questions from the board, and then we'll accept questions from the audience. Following the public hearing, we'll deliberate in the back of the auditorium all matters before us. Should you have any questions after this hearing, please feel free to call the planning department. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you may or may not know, tonight is the last public hearing for our chairman, Arson Mercarien. So before we get into our applications, I would like to invite up our town supervisor, Tony LaFontaine. He has a few words he would like to read on behalf of the town.
So, surprise, surprise, huh?
I thought you were just working on your pension again.
That's right, just trying to boost those pension costs, Arson. Tony LaFontaine, Tony Woodside Drive, Penfield, Town Supervisor. I wanted to take an opportunity and come in and dress the board tonight, and specifically the chairman. Not often that you get someone so dedicated that has served in so many different capacities on the board for as long as he has, and brought so much rich history and background with him. And one of the opportunities that I was given on behalf of the town board this evening, and this is well wishes for the entire town board, was a short proclamation. And I promise that we will go easy on you. This is not a formal roast, Arson, but I will say that several dozen people contributed to this in a lot of different ways as we go through. So if you would bear with me and indulge me for just a moment, I would like to read this into the record and make this part of the permanent record for the planning board and for the town of Penfield. Whereas, Arson, Penfield, New York, a highly respected citizen with a passion for civic participation, he has served on the Penfield Planning Board since January 1st, 1999, and has led the group as the chairperson since 2011. And whereas during his 14 years on the planning board, Arson was instrumental in leading the community through an impressive 600-plus community projects. Notable among them include Eastside YMCA, Bayview YMCA expansions, Linden Oaks Development, Linden Hills, Falvo Funeral Home, Classy Chassis, Car Wash, Elderwood, and Baytown Redevelopment and Rezoning. And whereas you can't make this stuff up category, when Arson began his tenure in 1999, Ellison Heights Phase 1 was under lawsuit. And as he retires 14 years later in 2013, Ellison Heights Phase 2 is under lawsuit. And whereas the town of Penfield's planning board is a respected model locally, regionally, and statewide. For example, in 2012, Arson and town planner Katie Evans presented to the New York State Upstate American Planning Association Conference and the Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council Fall Local Government Workshop on the Penfield Planning Board's innovative electronic review and use of laptop computers. And whereas prior to moving to Penfield in his years of service on the Penfield Planning Board, Arson served as mayor of Messina, New York. Now, I'll ask those that are in the audience how many people know where Messina, New York is. From 1983 to 1987, where he and his administration worked towards gaining public access through the St. Lawrence River, he also partnered with St. Lawrence County in SUNY Potsdam to open a freshwater aquarium on the river. And so I'd like to pause here. And when I first met Arson, I'm originally from the Adirondacks up in Serenike Lake. So Arson and I had some commonality because we could talk about the Adirondacks and some of those times that we enjoyed in the Adirondacks. And as Arson was sharing with me the fact that when he and a couple of his buddies decided that they were going to take on the establishment, if you will, of Messina and go in because he believed, and they believed, that they could run that community better than those that were running it at the time. And so Arson's comment to me was, "I didn't go into the race thinking or planning I was going to lose." But he says, "I gotta tell you, I was the most surprised when I came out that I won." And that next number of years, he and his administration did a lot of work and a lot of good for Messina and for that area that's lasting to this day. And whereas after that, Arson moved to Syracuse where he served as a planning, as a board of director for Syracuse Model Housing, an organization dedicated to rehab of residential and commercial properties and new builds similar to the work that's done for Habitat for Humanity. During Arson's tenure, the agency won many awards for their work, but the highlight for Arson was the fact that part of the group that placed families in solid homes that positively impacted their lives. And to me, that is a real tribute to the type of work and the type of person that Arson Arson has made it a priority to be informed. He regularly attends town board meetings, weekly project review committee meetings, and other events to be effective in his role on the planning board. And whereas Arson has been a mentor to many and always considered that what is the best interest of Penfield, he consistently expresses great wisdom in his input and his comments. And many of his colleagues have said, "Arson may not have much to say, but when he talks, all should listen." And whereas the town board of the town of Penfield and the Penfield residents are proud of the town's thoughtful planning and development, and even though many residents may not know Arson personally, they have benefited from his unwavering dedication and commitment to the town and to the town residents. And whereas those who work with Arson will miss his laughter and lighthearted demeanor, pockets full of Hershey Creamy hard candies, fresh homemade sausage, yes, I'll miss that as well, Arson, and even his clean pressed shirts. And I have to tell you, I see a lot of people come in here dressed from very casual to very professional, everything in between. I will say, when he comes in in a pair of shorts and a pressed shirt, he is the head of the town hall. And whereas the love that Arson has for his family and friends, especially his wife and grandkids, is truly admirable. When he's not visiting the town hall here for meetings or at the various staff get-togethers, you can find him with his wife and his grandkids, maybe bicycling or perhaps off-traveling to warmer climates, which is exactly where we expect him to be during his retirement. And although Arson is retiring from the planning board, we look forward to working with him as an active member of the Penfield community in the upcoming years. And whereas the bright future of the town of Penfield, the community known as a great place to raise a family, its outstanding quality of life, and thoughtful, sustainable living depends directly on the kind of involvement and leadership that Arson has contributed over the years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town board on behalf of the entire town of Penfield thanks Arson for his 14 years of service and dedication to the town of Penfield. And be it further resolved, the town board wishes Arson and his family all the best in all of his future endeavors. Arson, congratulations.
With that, I'd like to call up our first speaker, Fred Rinaldi, Lorland Inc., 205 St. Paul Street, Suite 215, Rochester, New York, 14604. FRJ Associates of Rochester requests under Article 9-9-2 of the code for preliminary and final site plan approval to allow for a 1,500 plus or minus square foot expansion of the previously approved 8,200 plus or minus square foot addition to the existing building on the 3.03 acres located at 2,000 Empire Boulevard. The property is now or formerly owned by Lorland Inc. and is zoned LB. Application number 13P-0027, SPL number 093.02-1-12.1. Fred?
Good evening. My name is Fred Rinaldi of Lorland Inc., 205 St. Paul Street. I'm also a very proud resident of the town of Penfield. I didn't realize that I'd be here to witness Arson's last public hearing.
Historical.
It is, it is historical. Actually, quite honestly, it is, for me, it's special. I don't know if you remember, but almost 10 years ago, my first public hearing was in this very board for the physical therapy in the back of this project. So I appreciate your service to the town, and I know that you will be missed. And actually, you're a big part of the reason that this town, you know, really feels like home, not the fact that I actually live in Penfield, but I do enjoy presenting to this board and all the town of Penfield's boards. So tonight, what we're going to be reviewing is actually a slight modification to site plan approval that was previously approved for 2,000 Empire Boulevard. A little while ago, I came in and presented this project as the next phase in evolution of what we're considering to be the medical campus at 2,000 and 2,010 Empire Boulevard. A couple months ago, the dialysis center opened at 2,010, which was an integral part of the facility's function as a campus. And what has happened since I originally presented to the board has been an evolution of the existing Rochester general practices within 2,000 Empire, an evolution of their floor plan interaction with each of the practices. So what I mean by that is the things like internal medicine, the blood lab, and pediatrics have now reprogrammed and modernized their footprint such that there'll be shared utilization of primary areas such as check-in and modernization of exam rooms. This proposal doesn't actually increase the number of exam rooms, it just modernizes the layout, flow, and function of the existing practices. So there is no additional demand on infrastructure such as parking, there is no additional employees, no additional employees are being added to the facility. What we're proposing is to take corridors that have been there for quite some time, a lot of our tenants have been there for about 18-plus years. It's taking the existing facility and modernizing it and really making it future-proof as a result of what the hospital has determined is an appropriate operation and flow for this facility. And that relates to referrals and the other uses that will be joining the existing practices on-site. Two weeks ago, I presented in front of the town's zoning board, and we received approval for two variances, modifying the lot coverage as a result of this request tonight to add 1,500 square feet to the building. So the areas that are additions are highlighted here in pink and also cross-hatched on the plans that were submitted with the package and disseminated through the administrative team. The portions that wrap what will be the new imaging center and the area that is now directly next to the pediatrics unit, they don't impact the aesthetics, the physical building. It'll be nearly identical to what was presented and approved by this board. It is simply extending and expanding the interior flow of the three practices that currently exist and then adding imaging to the existing facility. So again, the actual use, utilization of the space, we're not adding any exam rooms or offices, so there's no additional employees, there's no additional demand on parking, infrastructure. This is exclusive to the interior layout and flow and demands on the current performance of the existing medical uses within the facility.
One question for you, Fred. They realize that from here on out, they're going to have to go up.
Yes.
They've squeezed this space about as much as you can possibly...
There's no question about it. There's no question about it. The one thing that's been fascinating to watch is the changes that have really happened, you know, over the last five years, but more recently, the last, you know, the last 16 months, watching these practices, their appropriations committees travel all over the country and really study how these practices are interacting with each other and how they're creating efficiencies through their referral programs and being able to kind of create a mini outpatient campus that relieves pressure from primary hospital facilities and also creates conveniences for neighborhoods. So it's really been an interesting process that my father started quite some time ago, and it's nice seeing it kind of come to fruition.
For the record, the improvements that have been made so far look terrific.
Thank you.
It's nice to have somebody like this at town.
Thank you very much.
Other questions from the board?
I have one question, Fred. On the northern building, on the left side where it flares out?
Yes.
It looks like the addition's going to come very, very close to the parking.
This portion here?
Yeah, right there. Especially the upper, the top parking spot. What is that distance and how are you going to protect the building if a car, I don't know, lurches forward or something?
It averages about six feet.
Is it six feet?
Yep. It averages about six feet. And then what we'll do, what we've actually done with all the, we've actually introduced now bumpers along the parking spaces that are against the facility 360 degrees.
Okay.
We did that for a number of reasons. One, we have a pediatrics unit there, so, you know, we're highly sensitive to life safety features. But one thing that's going to be updated with regards to the exterior portions of this facility with these improvements are the, kind of introducing more current parking facilities with regards to bumpers, the landscaping, other features that wrap the building 360 degrees. This area, because it's so close to the building, because we're proposing a lot of glass, this is going to have a mix of perimeter ground landscaping. We will ensure that there's, you know, a proper barrier that would restrict a car. I don't want to put a bollard there, but there's things that we can do to protect that building facade. The one thing that we have done is the windows, the ledge in those windows is, I think, a minimum of about four feet. So they won't be, if a car, I'm not going to allow it to happen, but say for instance a car were to hit the building, they'd be hitting a solid wall. We're proposing brick there. But beyond that, I'll testify to the fact that I'll be sure to work with your team to make them comfortable that we've created enough protection there that a vehicle couldn't in fact roll easily up into the building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the pinch point is shown on the plan is three feet.
Okay, I couldn't tell what number that was.
This distance, and I'll have BME highlight that. We did a landscaping takeoff, and I know that we've asked that we had, I think we have a minimum of six feet at that corner to accommodate our landscape plan. So I'll have that, I'll highlight that and have it verified.
Yeah, I think that if you're within five feet, that you need impact resistance designed into the opaque wall portion. So you're going to want to take a look at that. I think you mentioned wheel stops. You might want to use a high curb.
For that area?
Yeah.
My, what I can tell you is that my design team with BME, they've had meetings, I believe, at PRC, and life safety is, you know, obviously the primary concern when we're going through these reviews. I can promise you that that will be treated properly.
Fair enough.
Fred, where do people, how do they get to the entrances to the building from that parking alongside of the building? And especially if there's pinch points that are, you know, three feet wide?
This, so if a patient were to park here, they would have to walk in the parking lot to the eastern entrance?
Is there a ramp right there where your finger is?
There's a ramp at this entrance. This portion, the intent of this portion, I, we have been working on the landscape improvements for the facility. We've been trying to make it very user-friendly so that we've made accommodations with pervious and impervious surfaces to have, to kind of make this a little more enjoyable and a little more pedestrian-friendly. So there are resources that we have, and we can get creative with how we treat this area, but this distance, when reviewed with our tenants with regards to level of convenience, wasn't a deterrent for the practices. Doug, is that your concern?
No, it was just getting people to the entrances safely. So, but if they're walking in the aisle, then that's what they'll do. Another entrance to that addition to the north?
We have, so there's the other addition? So this portion is imaging. They have, right now, they have, they've made accommodations for an entrance at the eastern portion. We're not showing it here because they're still, the plan has gone through, the reason I'm here today is because it's gone through, the interior flow plan has gone through major changes. So they are trying to determine whether they want to bring all the patients through the east and southern entrances. But there is, you'll see that there's, we do call in the plan, there is a concrete walk there to provide for access. I haven't been, I haven't seen a floor plan that shows it as a final layout.
All right.
But this portion is exclusive to imaging.
Okay, thank you.
Fred, have you submitted any additional plans for the town engineer? Right, they asked for, on the new plans here?
Yes, we've submitted updated plans. BME also submitted an updated engineer's report that Jeff had asked for. It was, it's dated October 8th.
Okay. And all his concerns are addressed?
All his concerns are addressed. And I do have a copy, if that's, it was disseminated to the town.
It's probably the package, I just wanted to make sure you addressed it, okay? Thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Anyone from the audience? Fred, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Next up, Clint, John Caruso, PE, Passero Associates, 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614. Ralph Antetomoso, Antetomoso Homes, requests under Article 9-9-2 of the code for final site plan approval to allow the construction of 17 single-family residential lots on 8.68 plus or minus acres located at 1200F, Five Mile Line Road, known as Water Song, Phase 4. The property is now or formerly owned by RMJ Land Group LLC and is zoned R120. Application number 13P-0029, SPL number 094.01-1-37.997. Jess?
Well, good evening. My name is Jess Sudal from Passero Associates at 252 West Main Street, Rochester, New York. With me this evening are Johnny Antetomoso and Mr. John Miko with Antetomoso Homes. First, on behalf of Passero Associates, in the last 14 years, we've been very fortunate to do quite a number of projects in the town of Penfield. And again, on behalf of our entire company, we want to thank Arson for her continued service and guidance throughout that process. So from all of us at Passero, thank you very much. Onto Phase 4 of the Water Song project. If you haven't heard already, Phase 4 has been selected for the 2014 Homorama, as many of you may have recalled. The Phase 3A here to the east of the project, north is actually to the right on that plane, was the 2010 Homorama. So everyone is quite excited that Water Song and the town of Penfield again has that opportunity. Phase 4 consists of a total of 17 lots, which is going to be construction phased into a Phase 4A and a Phase 4B. Phase 4A will contain Homorama, that is 10 lots. Currently, it looks like there's going to be about seven builders or seven homes constructed as part of the Homorama, which is a great number. For those of you who are able to attend the 2010 show, there was four at that time, so hopefully it's a sign of current times, but we're all very excited about that. It's a pretty aggressive schedule. We're actually hoping to have the show in June of next year. The town board has recently accommodated us to a certain degree by allowing us to construct the roadway and place millings down over the course of the fall, which will allow the home builders to start in very early next year. Typically, when doing subdivision, you need to have asphalt down before you can start building your basement, but obviously with the season, the way it is, and the asphalt plant's closing in perhaps less than a month, that was our solution to keep the schedule moving. So I just wanted to bring that up so that this board could understand how we're hoping to accomplish the June 2014 show. Some of the comments are probably the main comment that we received from the PRC review included the question of, "Well, you already have Phase 3B approved over here, there's 10 lots. Why wouldn't you just use that as part of the Homorama this year? You wouldn't even really have to come back and deal with the approvals." Well, there's actually three answers to that, and I wanted to just bring them up now. For starters, as a result of the 2010 Homorama and also the continued marketing of the Water Song subdivision, there's actually already several different parties, some who are actually family members of the Antetomasos, who are interested and have actually reserved lots in Phase 3B. So the hope is that that's the next phase that will be developed after Homorama. And again, there's already interest in those lots with people who have kind of earmarked them for their future home. The second reason is the proximity of Phase 4A to the existing infrastructure, which was actually installed as part of the Homorama show in 2010. For those of you who were attended, you may recall that there is a parking lot up here right adjacent to Five Mile Line Road. The idea is that could be utilized again for this show, and it would be immediately adjacent to the proposal as is. And believe it or not, the third reason, and perhaps maybe the most importantly, is the uniformity of the lots in 4A. When Phase 3 was done, there was actually a lot of back and forth and problems with the developers because the lots along the east had walkout basements and the lots along the west didn't. And the lots along the east had the pond on the adjacent develop and the lots west. So there was a lot of back and forth that ultimately created, you know, some problems that were pretty much unforeseen at the time. So the good thing about Phase 4A is all the lots are uniform, they're all flat, it's all fair, it's adjacent to the parking area that's already been installed, and it's not going to infringe on some of the people that have already identified Phase 3B as their future home. One other comment I wanted to touch on that came out of the PRC comments, and it seems like a fairly simple thing, but something that's always important to us as engineers, is drainage. Now, we have the benefit with this phase and any phase for that matter of the subdivision of utilizing existing drainage infrastructure that's already in place, including storm sewers, ponds, and so on. But there is a catch basin, and I'll point it out right in this area, that was installed actually as part of Phase 2. And then the lot that was right next to it hadn't been developed and Phase 3 was built, so it was never properly finished. And the grate was never, you know, filled in and seated and that kind of thing. Phase 4A is immediately up against that catch basin. So we're actually going to be able to finish the backside of both Phase 2 and Phase 3 and really make that whole area uniform and clean it up. Where there's some low spots now, we're going to be able to bring in that fill and really clean everything up, get rid of some low spots, and fix any, you know, again, low drainage that's out there. So other than that, and the fact that this is the Water Song, or I'm sorry, the Homorama for 2014, it is a very standard project. All the existing utilities, infrastructure is in place, there's no curb cuts, there's nothing like that. We have sidewalks, you know, it's going to be fairly standard subdivision in the town of Penfield, meeting all the town's requirements.
Jess, I've got a couple of questions. I was out there today, and it's a gorgeous subdivision, so congratulations on, it's a really beautiful houses out there. I didn't, there's a lot of houses under construction at the end of the latest addition there. I didn't see a lot of erosion control fencing. I see it shown on your plan, but I don't think I saw any around the earthwork that was being done there. Any, any idea what's going on?
No, that's certainly something I'll relay to the particular home builder there. To be honest with you, I haven't looked closely at that lot that's being developed. I know that there's a stormwater pollution prevention plan that's in place, and it's in place to, you know, govern construction activities, so I'll be sure to point that out.
Do you go out there every so often to?
Well, we have an inspector who does our SWIP inspections.
Okay.
Who regularly visits the site, and I'll follow up with them to make sure that that's reflected through on our reports.
Okay, thanks. I see on your plans, and this is probably left over from some of your previous sections that were developed, the trees, and your tree list were Norway maples, ash, and sugar maple, and I guess I wouldn't suggest any of those, especially along the road, but there's probably a couple alternatives that you could suggest for those, to take the place of those. Norway maples are, you know, and ash has the beetle problem.
Sure.
And, so, then salt damage with the sugar maples. The light poles that I see out there, you're proposing the same kind of light poles for the new section, is that right?
Yes, it is, and it's more, you know, if this was a brand-new subdivision, we'd probably look at some, you know, the use of metal halide opposed to what's out there now, but it's more for the uniformity and conformance with the existing phases.
And another detail I saw in your plans was tree protection and fencing, and maybe that's just kind of one of your standard details on the plans. Are you saving any other trees in the, on the, this section?
No, you're correct, and that's a standard detail, there's no mature vegetation on this site.
Okay, that's what I thought.
What else on the board, any questions?
Yeah, one question. Jess, there's a letter dated, what, October 10th, from Monroe County Water Authority regarding the easement. Will you provide a copy of that?
I was not provided a copy, but I am aware of the situation. That's actually, the easement that they're talking about is up here immediately along Five Mile Line Road, not in this particular project area. I know it is something that the Antetomosos have been discussing with the water authority. I don't believe that they're prepared to make it part of this application. A little verbiage there. But it's, you know, something that they're, ongoing discussions with them, but they're trying to keep the Homorama and that effort separate from the water main easement.
I guess one more question. As I walked through that whole field, I noticed in that, it's the upper-left corner, I guess which would be the southwest corner of your property, there's some barns back there that look like they're kind of leaning and...
Yeah, they're right.
Don't look exactly safe. Is that, what's your plan for those in the near future?
Ultimately, obviously, they're going to be removed, they're far beyond any kind of restoration. I don't know that they're necessarily going to be removed as part of this phase, but they will be removed from the property at some point in the future.
Are they pretty much abandoned at this point? And are they used for anything, or what's?
They're not used for anything. Yeah, they're abandoned. Thanks.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience?
Hello, my name is Frank Maleka. I live on 55 Water Song Trail, and first thing I want to say is I'm very excited, very happy for the Antetomozo family to continue the development in our neighborhood. Very, very positive, very positive going on, so thank you for doing that. I also think this is a great opportunity to address what Jess mentioned about that catch basin in the corner of Lot 158, which is in the southwest corner of my lot. There was, at the time, the drainage and the grading at that area that didn't properly drain all the water from those lots, and they did have that trench dug around there to let the water out. So I'm glad to hear that is part of the plan, that trying to integrate in all of the new development, Phase Four, with the existing Three and Two, will be part of a comprehensive plan to manage the stormwater. So, thank you.
Turning on else in the audience? Thank you, nice to see Homorama again. We'll close this hearing. For the final time?